Hello there guys, well. My day has been completely interrupted by Portsmouth City Council, Social Services Department, again. Same woman luckily, same person calling me, again. After ringing back the Chief Executive, even the Chief Executive's office said, Kelly, you must answer the phone, they're trying to help you. I said, how exactly are they helping me? So, I'm going to say it again. I am now with a chiropractor. The chiropractor has sorted my pelvis, which was completely subfloxed after giving birth to six children. Any mother who's given birth to six children is potentially going to have some scars, some healing, maybe even a subfloxed pelvis if they have Erlostrandlos syndrome like me. So yet again, I've had them on the phone. Now luckily, it has ended up with her putting the phone down. Now the challenge and the problem is, I've just posted up a video of a woman who was pulled over by the police. When you assert yourself with these people, so if you turn around and say, by what law are you holding me under? So say that you drive down the road, or walk down the road, or you're in your house, and you are detained unlawfully and unnecessary by the police or social care. If you turn around and say to them, you have currently kidnapped me, they would go, you're aggressive when you're being assertive. They will use particular words that can trap you by the law, even if you just say, fuck off, right? There is a law that if you swear at the police or social and go, fuck off, they can have you under. So anyway, this little nice little neighbourhood here, that likes to call social care, same like the same little neighbourhood over there, and I'm assuming there are lots of neighbourhoods where neighbours like to use social care. So now, we're taking it further. Now, it's time for judicial reviews on every single case. And I need you people, because if we don't do this as a mass, I can do what I can and go and, you know, do landmark cases, but unless other people are coming forward saying the same as what I'm saying, and we are all actually, I believe, pretty much saying the same thing. As I have told social, everything within the perimeters of this wall is my safe place. It's my safe place. From the moment I go into my door and I enter into my home, this is my hallway, is there? I enter my home. This is my safe place. Obviously not, as we have an issue going on, by the way. Just to show you, we've got a bit of an issue going on with the wind, that whenever the wind, our window opens. So that means I have to bring somebody into my home to sort my windows, right? Now, as I have told social yet again, I don't have any problems with social workers, I really don't. As I told the lady on the phone, I'm sure she is heartfelt, a really lovely lady, who decided at one point in her life that she wanted to help people. And she wanted to go into a job called social care to help people. As I have explained, and there are changes coming into this system. Children's social care is a multi-agency framework, yes, it surrounds circle, you sit around a round table with a chair, and then there is a multi-agency framework. All of this is meant to come around criminal. If a parent, say me, causes significant harm to a child, then in this current system, if they know, because at the end of the day, it would take from children to bring that information out, doesn't it? So say, let's use my two boys as a private example, my children are not abused, boys. I can't show you them as they are now, because once we're in our private space, my children like to strip off and take their clothes off. It is their private space and this is where they are allowed to do it. As you know, there's a landmark case going in on in Brighton, Bristol at the moment, for homeschooling against Portsmouth City Council and five other parents that have already had intervention by social care with their children. They haven't lost their children, their children haven't been taken. This is just about the involvement that the authorities have within one said personal life. There is every facility in the world for any child, if they go through the education system, to report or disclose to somebody that they are being abused. As I well know, I regularly told my teachers what was going on with me. In fact, I think even I got my teachers to the side to say, this is what is going on. I was labelled a liar and attention seeker. It is very difficult for people to hear information and we're going back 20, 30 years with me, but nothing has changed. This social worker that is trying to call me has to have eyeball with my children to confirm by her eye, I spy with my little eye, that she has to go away knowing that my children are safe. Now as a social worker, she's not qualified to do this, which means she is nothing more than an information gatherer and witness. Now I have rang her back since putting the phone down and I've been really direct with her, really direct. Now, as I have just told Dean as well, I don't think people understood the complexity of the trauma that me and my son Liam were put through by ourselves in the court process. So me and Liam were on our own, okay, we had nobody with us, we had no family with us, we had no friends, we had no community. All my family were in jobs, stuck, and I don't think people understood what was really going on. Every child in this world has a right to be loved and adored by their parents. Unfortunately, most children are not created through the intimate passionate love that children should be created through. Unfortunately, most of the world is just having sex. Most of the world, male and female, even female, female, male, male, are just fucking. Two men having penetration, not so much of a problem, they can fuck each other as much as they like. Two women having sex together, not so much of a problem if they don't love each other, there is no child that can come into this world. However, when you have a man and a woman fucking, having sex, when there is no love for each other, there is the risk of a child coming into this world. There are people out there, like the two women, that can't create child, and two men that can't create child, but they are in love. In fact, I would probably say that more lesbian, gay, let's go into it, oh, we can't be missing them out now, can we? We've got to be politically correct now, people, we've got to remember the transgenders, we've got to remember all the fucked up people in the world when we're dealing with mental health issues now, haven't we? Don't be deagretry now, let's bring it back to man and woman. Too many men and women are fucking out there, having sex, having intimacy, that is not the intimacy relationship they should be having. There is a husband for us all, there is a wife for every man. But unfortunately, there is so much damage done to people in relationship because men think with their dicks. That man is coming through with the intentions of sticking his penis into your vagina, ramming it, getting off, getting up and fucking off back out, yeah? That's why we have things called escorts, that way escorts can be paid to leave. There is no emotional connection, they know, they are just a fuck. Unfortunately, in this world, we have lots of single women that want to be married in relationships, want to be in love and want to have a family. Now, when someone said woman has a protective factor, the man that is in love with her, who is her protector, her provider, yes, she makes her own money, yes, she has her own life, yes, she has her own friends, she's not a slave, yeah? When we're dealing with real true love, when children are brought into the world with true love, yeah? And we have children made from love, then we become the protective factors. Unfortunately, because children are not being made in real love, and the man who has put his penis into the vagina of one said woman and created a baby out of that, usually the woman gets told, it's not mine. It's not mine. So then we're dealing with a whole amount of defamation and discrimination already. Is the woman a whore, is she faithful, is she loyal? She just persecuted and defamated a woman who's laid on her back, your penis has entered her vagina, a baby has been created, she has gone to you and said, hey, there's a baby here, and now it's up to the man to take personal responsibility. However, unfortunately, we have lots of manipulative, lying, bitchy, country, horrible, disgusting, vile women out there who will tell men that they are pregnant with somebody else's child. There's women out there, mate, who will tell men they're pregnant when they're not even pregnant. Hence why I battered the living daylights out of one girl when I was 11 year old for putting my friend through absolute hell, telling him that she was pregnant and asking me for a tampon. Portsmouth breathes. More of this, with its nightclubs, its debauchery, its nights out, making sure that students in universities are having out of sex marriages, relationships. Marriage in this country has been whitewashed. Here in the UK, Henry VIII, when he very got divorced and created the Church of England denomination, pretty much took the whole standard and value of marriage away. A wife is meant to leave her father, her father who should have been taking responsibility for his daughter. Unfortunately, we're dealing with men that have created children, not through love, and then you've got people, daughters and sons like me, that get left out in the cold with no parents. No parents actually taking genuine responsibility. In fact, they do exactly the same as the social workers do by defamating and discriminating because the child was not brought into a place of love wanted and needed. It appeared, the child just turned up. Children don't just turn up, it takes for a penis to enter a, I haven't got a hole anywhere, a vagina, hmm, vagina. And there's sick twisted men out there right now who would be getting off on the fact that my finger has just entered into my mouth and all of a sudden their sex drives is so bad that they can't think of anything right now than getting their penises out and going tug, 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 because they've been completely sexualised by my finger entering into my mouth. That's how much people do not have sexual control. Me, I've had enough of it all, mate. I've been, had enough of being fucked from the arse, fucked from the mouth, bent over and fucked. I've got to be careful because I've got two little boys sitting in there right now. I'm trying to stay out of their way where they cannot hear what their mother is saying, because there is a line, isn't there? Between what is considered appropriate and what is considered inappropriate. So where is the line drawn if parents don't love their kids? And don't protect their kids and don't safeguard their kids? And mothers don't protect their children from the men that come into their lives to fuck them and really couldn't give a shit if they're jumping into the bed and going and fucking their daughter or son either? We cannot hate one species. This is not about hating men, this is not about hating women. This is not about people wanting to be so disgusted with being a man or a woman that they want to get out of their bodies. You know, I'm a woman and I shouldn't have to walk down the street being a man to safeguard and protect myself. The police is meant to be there to safeguard and protect. As we know, it rapes, violates. We know this of social workers too. So it is time for us to know our laws, it is time for us to know everything down to our own sexual gratification and personal boundaries, down to who it is that we choose to be in our lives, down to who we choose to have around us. As I told the social worker, this is my personal space. One day my children will grow up and have their own personal space, but this is my personal space. Nobody crosses over this door without my say so. This door is the only thing that I have between me and the outside world. This is the difference between the right to a private life. And we all have a right to a private life inside the perimeters of these doors. What we bring out here should be nothing more than making the world a better place than where you left it. Just little silly things like, it's not even mine, but it's out the front of my door. Okay, it's not a problem, it's not my responsibility, but it is at the front of my house. Oh, it is my responsibility, it's fallen out of my bin. I can tell, I take responsibility, I apologise, it goes in the bin. But that line and that threshold is mine, mine and my children's, no father's when he's here. And any person that I feel can be protected within the zone of my home, okay? Now, two seconds, boys, it's only me knocking, you don't have to worry, I'm just pretending. There's a line, isn't there, between? Now, we all know the difference between a, oh, I can't do it, it's going to hurt my hand. Yeah? Or we all know the difference between a? Yeah? Now, when we need to knock? Yeah? There's a difference. One is coming in to help, what are you trying to do? One is coming in to hinder. Anyway, it's my boys' lunch, we've got, what we've got today, we've got, they've completely thrown our morning. Hello, just the social services, Shiloh, can you just step back a minute darling? Just, just so I don't get you naked. Just for the social workers out there, just in case you want to see in my freezer, love. Unfortunately, the bottom one needs defrosting. But if social would like to come in and check for my beef, my turkey thighs. I'm actually a vegetarian. Chicken breast, social workers can't process this, they just go, there's no meat in the house for the children. We do eat meat, meat things. We even have spicy bean, vegetarian. Now, the challenge that you're up against on a social worker is, oh, hang on, two seconds, you can have it all. All preparation in here, ice packs, obviously, for any injuries. Just in case one of us has a dislocation, we have, just wait two seconds. Yep, you can have one of those if you want. No, not the morgues, they've got to stay in there, if they get burst, I've got to redo them. Um, all my frozen peckers are in here and stuff, just in case, obviously, we do get a bit of an issue. I don't have a big freezer. I always keep emergency pizza in just in case Dean turns up. And then obviously, they are, they are cold, you know, we have the milk. Put it in the drop drawer. Just didn't these social workers want to see through my fridge? We have potatoes. So when you hear my son say he's hungry, it's not like we don't have food. When my children, do you want to go and take the last one of that one? Yeah, you want to take the last one of that? So, that's the other ham, do you want it or my, ah, if not, I'll have it because it's my favourite. Go on then, you have it. Ah, we have marons. Spinach cheese, it just means that my children want sweets. Now, if a social worker said, oh, Kelly, you need to give your children sweets, and I say, no, I don't. Social worker says, Kelly, you think it's really unfair that you don't give your children any fizzy coke? Well, no, they don't. Now, how do they make you? Oh, thank you, one for me. So yeah, I've told them today, send me your paperwork, mate. Your defamating, discriminating things from this little asshole over here. And I'll send you everything through to prove that it's false, now get away from me. Because the thing is, you only have to show any form of aggression and these people have got you for 26 weeks. They ain't got me for 26 weeks again. So I'm going to court. But what I will say, I choose to not eat with my mouth open, that's my manager. No social worker needs to tell me I shouldn't eat with my mouth open. My mum and dad might not have loved me in the way that anyone would love a child that they choose, but they still loved me because once a baby come into the world, it's very difficult to not love. A tiny little cute baby, is there? But that baby takes nurturing and growing and time. And they grow into boys who grow into men. And my men, boys, do not need women telling them that they're going to grow up into rapists, murderers and child abusers basically, because they're not. And if my men and my boys ever step to you, yeah, and you see a side of my boys, it's because you've crossed the line with their mum, or one of them. Because other than that, they're pretty peaceful boys, quite happy, quite chilled. So I won't be dealing with any of this, and the saddest thing about it is, had I had been, I'd just said something to, I'd just had a go at court with Dean, right? Because I get a bit funny with Dean. And I go, well, if you'd come to court with me in the first place and I had a legal team when I first met you, if I hadn't have left with you, and then all of a sudden it hit me, if I'd gone and done it then, I wouldn't be the person I am now. And if I wasn't the person I am now, I didn't know about judicial reviews back then. I didn't know how to take a criminal prosecution against them back then. I didn't know that when a social worker or police officer knocks on your door, you can stand on this side of the door and not even let them in. Unless they got a warrant to arrest you. No, he's not eating bacon, I know you don't eat bacon, he's not eating bacon, he's eating the other stuff. Yeah, but he likes it, he likes it, it's you that doesn't seem to eat your meat. And I get it, and I get it, and I don't think we should be eating any meat. Yeah, if the animal has been cruelly looked after, no, he doesn't like it and it's fine. If the animal has been cruelly looked after, that is different. And I'm having my own thing over whether to be vegetarian or vegan at the moment, or meat eater. No, I'm going to make some lunch, now stop. No, I'm making lunch lunch. No, this is snack stuff. No, you're not having this right now, you had this morning. No, you can have lunch stuff. No. See, I also have, just for the social workers. If you want to deal with tins and jars. So let's just say, my kids don't starve, mate. I just like eating out. All right, you want some snacks, anyway, I'm going to go to Portsmouth City Council, mate. I'm going to make an example out of you, I'm going to prove how you have been abusing, how you have been manipulating. Okay, take everything that you would say a man in DV would do, is what the police and social workers are doing. Gaslighting, Shiloh, pack it in, mate, we will get nothing out there. Gaslighting. Even say the, um, the police officer the other day, that, um, that was, um, yes, so my children have plenty to choose from, it's the fact that he's asking for this, yeah? They had, uh, sausages and eggs for breakfast this morning, so, I can't exactly win you about it, come on. So let me just explain what I'm trying to explain, what I'm trying to explain is, any person coming into my house is not here to judge me. If any person wants to come into my house and say, whether they believe that my kettle is in the right or wrong place, whether they believe, no, obviously, if I had, if I was, if I was messy, and I mean like, you want the other spoon, if I was like, that one?
Yes.
See, even, perfect, see, even my son knows the difference between the spoon that I've just given him and the spoon that I just offered him, yeah? And he didn't want that spoon. My boys know who they are. And social care and social housing should be a place to raise people up. People come to the system broken, you don't need all of these diagnoses. You're either a whole holistic person and you have your full conscience, or you're a broken consciousness, and that's it. There is no borderline personality, there is no narcissistic traits, there is no depression, there is no, um, any of these things. Your body is either whole and healthy or it's not. And all these sentences and labels that they're using is nothing more than a load of think tanks looking, putting somebody through a situation and seeing how they react. Not everybody reacts the same way. As I have told social, there's only one person who's going to be knocking on my door this October. Only one. And that's going to be the postman. And the only person, hello, mate, how you doing? Yeah, the only person, and I treat everybody as if they are my best friends, okay? Obviously not open with all information, but I believe that people are people and we don't have any rights to judge people. Now, the difference is, we can be nice to people, but not everybody has good intentions. The only thing that's going to come across this threshold to me is the letter that's going to come from the people that have got Aaron and Faith, that's going to be sent to Wrexham Adoption Agency, that's going to be sent off to the post office, and then someone is going to bring it to my door and drop it off to me. Once I have dealt with that letter, then people may knock on my door. Because until then, I deal with complex trauma. It doesn't make me a bad person, it doesn't make me that you can all come in and go, well, Kelly's got mental health, yes, I've got mental health issues. It's called asshole issues, it's called a bunch of fucking pricks called social workers, teachers, doctors, headmasters of school, my own parents I have to put in this box, who all think that they can make assumptions, judgements and be wrong. And try to thrust that wrongness down my throat. Now, they could do anything that they like to try to access my house right now, and they can. They can even bring two big macho police officers to come to my door. Do you know what's going to happen? I'll show you what's going to happen. Well, hang on, this will be a police knock, won't it? So hang on, let's, let's, let's get this right, this will be the police, won't it? Hang on. That's what I'll hear. Now, I will go, lock. 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 I will come up here. I will go to my balcony. I will tell them down here that my door is locked, this family is now currently protected. Any person stepping across that threshold with any information that is defamating, discriminating, liable, slanderous, whether verbally, orally or written, will step across this door. And if you want to defamate me out there, then I have every right to protect myself. Just as I have every right to protect myself in my own home. Now, the challenge is, this is contracted by the council. So everybody jumps to the law. Now, if I was standing on my own property, my own laws, my own things, it would be very different. And it would, I'd be able to shoot you, mate. Even a council house, I could probably still shoot you. Gun control, different, can somebody like me carry a gun? I don't know, I've never really actually gone to find out. As much as I have actually told people, come into my womb to take my baby, I will shoot you. I didn't even have a passport at the time that I was telling people that I would lose, uh, leave the country. It's called fear, that's what grandeur is. That's when you blow up, when you say, I'll do something that you can't carry out yourself. So what I can do is carry out, and it's keep a nice little video there. And make sure at all times, I have a video seated here. So to the person that ever wanted to put any video cameras in my house, you're more than welcome to do that now. I am going for a managed move. Social, I will be finding out, and I would love to find out, how many people has social helped? And I want a real glowing statement of what social have actually genuinely done to help you. Even if there was a vibrator up your ass and you were a baby and you were being raped, I want to know what they really did for you. I mean, really did for you. Because so far, I don't see social doing anyone any favours. All I see is defamation, discrimination, a bunch of tick words, lots of cut and pastes, an unfavourable balance of probability because it's all based on medical notes on a standard of when you've not been well. So the balance of probability is over immediately. And most parents don't even know what to do in these situations, so they don't even know how to defend themselves. So now it's time to take your power back. And if you have been affected by social services, please join us over on F E A. I want all your stories. I want to know everything, line by line, even the things that are not on paper, the phone calls that they've made, whether they threatened you, whether they even said to you, if you don't speak to me, we can come and take our kids, just like the letter says. If you do not reply to this, we will have the powers to go to court and remove your children. If these people want to take me to court again at the same time, I won't make an example out of me, mate. I really wouldn't, Portsmouth, I really wouldn't. Anyway, I will see you all later on, down at the Nice Common later, first watch the Red Arrows going up. It's gonna be really nice. I quite like it. It's a bit of a boys' thing. Me and the boys have got to make up for our day because it's been completely interfered with yet again, trigger and throe and merry off, setting our routine out of place. We've missed our morning midday and I think now we're coming into sort of the afternoon, so um, I've just given my son some cereal instead of some lunch and, and, and it's snap, crackle and pop. Kellogg's, my sponsors, hopefully, soon, one day. Um, so anyway, yeah, keep trying, keep trying, but I have responded. I've told her what a lovely, nice lady she is and with the potential of coming over, but if you come anywhere near my door, mate, with your misfeasance, malfeasance and non-misfeasance in public office, I'm stronger now. I'm stronger now. People don't know what I went through in that courtroom by myself. They don't know the trauma that I felt. You don't know what went on in that room. You don't know what they did to us. And I was alone with my son, my fifteen year old son. And I just met a bunch of you at my committal to prison. I don't even know you people. And I don't, I've listened to people's story. I've got to know a few people, you know, I'd probably say Arjuna, probably about the only person and potentially Steph. And, and out of all of this, that really is Steph, probably, and we haven't seen each other since. Steph is probably about the only person that I could really probably say that I'm really connected with on all of this. Um, you know, because we sat down and we shared stories on Hyde Park together. Everything else has just been a tailspin. But now, I'm not the same person. I'm not the same person as when I sat down with social, thinking that these people were there to help me get to the next stage. Naive, naive, naive. Difficult one, isn't it? So yeah, we've got to do this, guys. If you have been affected by social care, let's help the people that are gonna be affected by them in the way that we were and make sure it stops. Because it's a violation of people's personal space. It is a violation of people's lives. And whether they're builders or whether they're not, when you're in a residential area, this is people's private, personal space. It's their peace. I don't want to listen to the damn drilling. It's a city. This city is gonna be going on for years now. Have you seen the regeneration for this city? Like I told them, time for me to leave Portsmouth now. I'm gonna keep me flat, though. Be worth quite a lot of money soon. See you later, guys.